That's a good question. I guess it's me, so I better go get him.
All right, good evening. Now that pass here. Scott, are you ready? Uh, okay. It's 5:28 and I'm calling to meet the order a few minutes ahead of time because of the weather warning that has been given. I've been given my marching instructions by panels, uh, members of the commission. But anyway, good afternoon. Welcome to the Durham Planning Commission. The members of the Planning Commission have been appointed by the city council and the county Board of Commissioners as an advisory board to the elected officials. You should know that the elected officials have the final say on any issue before us tonight. If you wish to speak on an agenda item tonight, please go to the table to my left and sign up to speak. For those of you who wish to speak, please state your name and your address clearly when you come to the podium, and please speak clearly into the microphone. Each side, those speaking in favor of an item and those speaking in opposition to an item would have 10 minutes to present for each side. The time will be divided among all persons wishing to speak. If you are here opposing a rezoning tonight, you should be aware of what is called a protest petition. A protest petition can be very helpful to those residents who live in the rezoning area. Please consult the planning department staff for any details on a protest petition, and they will be happy to help you. You should also keep in constant contact with the planning department as to when your case will go before the elected officials for a final vote. And finally, all motions are stated in affirmative, so if a motion fails or ties, the recommendation is for denial. Thank you, and can we have the roll call?
Commissioner Bealan, Commissioner Busby, Vice Chair Davis, Commissioner Freeman, Commissioner Gibbs.
Commissioner Gibbs had requested and been granted excuse absence.
Chair Harris.
Present.
Commissioner Huff. Commissioner Hollensworth. Commissioner Hyman.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Paget.
Present.
Commissioner Whitley.
Present.
Commissioner Winders.
Present.
And Commissioner Freeman is coming in as we... Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Good evening, Commissioners. Pat Young with the Planning Department. Uh, there are no adjustments to tonight's agenda, but I can certify for the record that all public hearing items before you have been advertised in accordance with the provisions of law, and there are affidavits to that effect on file with the Planning Department.
Thank you. Any commissions having adjustments? If not, the next item is approval of the minutes from our November 11th meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Miller.
Uh, I noted that we, when the minutes were distributed to us, our written comments were not attached as they have customarily been. It's my understanding that with the departure of Ms. Black, uh, that that's probably attributable to that. Doesn't mean that those comments weren't received and made a part of the record, uh, as they customarily are. Is that correct?
That is correct, Commissioner Miller. Um, we, what we'll do is we'll distribute those to you prior to them being attached to the, uh, items that go to council and the Board of Commissioners for your review.
Thank you very much. That, that was my principal concern, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, can we get the...
Thanks.
Motion for approval?
Second.
There's been motion by the vice chair and second by Commissioner Miller that the minutes from the November 11th meeting be approved. All those in favor, let it be known by showing the right hand. All those in opposition?
The motion carries 12 to 0.
Thank you. The first case before us tonight is public hearing zoning map change requests.
Good evening, Jacob Wiggins with the Planning Department. Um, as the chair noted, this case is Z1400036. This is a request by Wet Rock Resources. Um, this is, excuse me, this is in the county's jurisdiction. This is a request to zone a portion of two properties from RS20 to RR. Um, and this is also for a 284 acre site with a proposed use of a potential conservation subdivision. Um, as you can see here on the context map in front of you, um, the case area is highlighted in red. Um, the two properties, uh, two subject properties, one is located at 109 Orange Factory Road, the other is located at 7001 North Roxboro Road. This site is located in the rural tier. Um, is located, also located within a watershed protection overlay district. Um, an aerial view of the property, um, as you can see, both properties are primarily forest land, and there is some farming that occurs, um, primarily at the location at 109 Orange Factory Road. Um, the staff determination on this case is that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, the ordinances, and other policies. I mean, as you normally find this to be a, a downzoning request, um, and it is removing a strip of RS20 zoning that would otherwise not be permissible within the rural tier. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have at the present moment, or turn it over to the applicant as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one person signed up to speak, Mr. Robert Shunk.
Good evening, Robert Shunk. I live here in Durham at, uh, 2627 University Drive. I won't repeat any comments that, uh, Mr. Wiggins made, but, uh, just to reiterate that it's a site that we've been working on for the last year, uh, with our client, Mr. Begel, uh, to prepare a conservation subdivision, and our goal here tonight is to bring this portion of the land into compliance with the comprehensive land use plan, uh, such that it can be used within the, uh, conservation subdivision that we're proposing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this item? Do we have anyone else? If not, then I will close the public hearing and bring it back before the commissioners. Do we have commissioners wishing to speak? Okay, I have Linda Miller. Okay. Uh, anyone else? Uh, okay, Commissioner Huff.
Um, I have a question for the developer right off. This piece of property, or these two pieces of property, that you're going to, I presume, combine to make a conservation subdivision, is that correct?
So, there are two larger tracts. The total tract acreage is 278 acres.
Okay, are you...
This, this 35 acres is not, are not separate tracts. They're part of that larger assemblage.
Uh-huh. So, the part of this that is on the east side of 501, are you going to use that then for, to satisfy your open space requirements to make the conservation subdivision?
Yes.
Okay. I have a question for staff. Um, I found...
Wiggins.
I found the, um, description of this rezoning extremely confusing and puzzling. You see two pieces of zoning on either side of a major highway, and, um, that, as I mentioned to you on the telephone, the term "site" is used to reference the zoning case as well as the larger case, and in the case of, as well as the larger site, the, that will be the conservation subdivision. And I felt like, um, I needed a, a map, perhaps just the outline of the site plan, or the site plan that you reference on, uh, in our packet, in order to understand this, what this was gonna be. Um, so...
Are you referring to what the site will ultimately be, or what is the area involved?
What was the area involved? I mean, the area involved includes, uh, some, some property on the other side, I believe, of, um, what's it, Andrews, uh, Road?
No, 501.
No, up north, on the north part.
The, um, Jacob Wiggins of the Planning Department, I would say that the two parcels, there's a portion of the parcel, um, that is located north of that. The areas involved with this rezoning are noted in the context map provided to you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I apologize if it wasn't clear as to what areas were involved in this rezoning in that map.
Yeah, I, I think that, that people should see what, uh, the site plan is for this.
If I might, um, Chair Harrison, Commissioner Huff, Pat Young with the Planning Department. We certainly strive to provide the best information possible, clarity and precision in our staff reports. I think what I want to emphasize here is that this is a, this is a rezoning request without a development plan.
Gotcha.
Really, what's before you all is just the two strips of land on either side that Mr. Wiggins depicted earlier. I think he very thoroughly and appropriately depicted those in the staff report. I rereviewed it this afternoon. Um, he tried to allude to information that was passed on to us, non-binding, uncommitted by the applicant about their intent. You certainly can address any questions about their intent to them, but none of it is committed because it's not a development plan rezoning.
I do understand.
So, so, I, I know you do, but I just want to clarify for the record that what's before you is just those two, those two portions of RS20. As Mr. Wiggins alluded to, those were zoned in 1959, when the idea of having commercial strip zoning was a, was a promoted planning concept. That's been discredited for close to 20 years now. So, really, this is just about returning that zoning to what our comp plan calls for, which is lowest density possible under residential zoning. Uh, we do have a graphic that depicts the submitted site plan, but it's completely uncommitted. It could change. It could be withdrawn. It could be modified. Uh, we do have it available if you want to refer to it, but it has no direct bearing to us before you tonight.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Miller?
So, I disagree with, with you, Patrick. Uh, I do believe it has a direct bearing, and, and it is mentioned in the staff report that this is, uh, rezoning in connection with, uh, this conservation subdivision, and I too would have liked to have had some sort of description about what the conservation subdivision, uh, proposal is, so, and understanding what the connection is. It's my understanding that if this property is not rezoned, uh, to RR, it will impact, uh, the way this conservation subdivision is brought about, if it's brought about. I mean, I understand that with a site plan, it's changeable at, uh, within the rules, uh, as a matter of, of, of choice by the developer, but I still would have liked to have seen some sort of greater description, including at least an outline of, of what property is being discussed as a part of the conservation subdivision. I also think that because it is an issue, that because there are not, there is no development plan, and there are no commitments, that that's something that I think is pertinent and should be considered in this whole issue about whether or not this rezoning should be granted. The rezoning is, is for the purpose of accommodating, uh, a developer's proposal. Uh, there isn't, there isn't a broader public purpose, uh, out there. However, well, I strike that. I believe there is. Uh, I do believe that having this kind of goofy arrangement of RS20 along the highway, where in all probability, there, it would be difficult, if not, it wouldn't be impossible, but it would probably be difficult to get driveway cuts onto 15501. But, so, I mean, I don't see this as being developed as RS20 with a bunch of lots, so perhaps it is, there is a public purpose here, separate and apart from the, the, uh, proposed conservation subdivision. My biggest concern here is this whole notion that, and if, can we display what we're talking about here as the property lines of the conservation subdivision?
Chair Harrison, maybe quickly, while Mr. Wiggins is pulling that up, I do want to reiterate for the rec, reiterate for the record that was what Mr. Wiggins is about to display, is an initial submittal of a proposed site plan. Um, this, at the time the staff report was drafted and required to be prepared, the site plan had not even been submitted. So, to your point, Commissioner Miller and, and Ms. Huff, we really had no means to do that even if we wanted to. Um, I think what I would emphasize is the request in front of you, which is to rezon, those two strips of acreage, 38 acres approximately in total, is unambiguously, in staff's opinion, a consistent with adopted policy, which is...
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, and so that was, that, that was really the focus of our analysis, not the impact on the, on the larger conservation subdivision, which is not, as, as been alluded to by you and, and our staff, um, not committed. So, the graphic before you is the initial submittal. Uh, there were several staff comments, so that's not gonna be what's finally approved, and you're gonna have to address any questions to the applicant, because this can, like I said earlier, either change or be withdrawn at any time.
Right, and, and, and I'm, because they can change it and withdraw it, I don't want to ask him, or, I don't see how that's productive. I did want to ask, the staff report says that the larger tract is 237 acres, and I, if I understood Mr. Wiggins correctly, did you say 284 acres? Has it changed since the staff report was sent to us?
Yeah, that was an error on my part. The total acreage for both parcels, I believe, is 284.
284, not 237.
Yeah, for the, the combination of the two parcels.
And for purposes of understanding the conservation subdivision ordinance, uh, whether it involves this tract or any tract, is it possible, do, under our UDO, do we consider tracts that are across a four-lane divided highway to be contiguous? At what point does, does a highway through, through a parcel separate them and keep them from being contiguous? I can understand saying that if you're across my street from me, my residential street, that that's contiguous, but I do have, I'm a little concerned about, I know you couldn't file a protest petition across this, this road.
Commissioner Miller, Pat Young again with the Planning Department. The UDO allows, really doesn't stipulate a limitation on the right of way width that separates the subcomponents of the project. What it stipulates is that the property be under a single plan of development with common authority, common responsibility for development, and, uh, or under common ownership, and that, that criteria is met in this case.
So, they could not, so it's really not an issue of contiguous?
That's correct. It's under a single plan of development, which is the site plan, and under single ownership.
So, it could be, uh, several islands of, of property. In other words, could I, you know, could I bring about a conservation subdivision, developing it one parcel intensely while conserving another parcel a mile away, non-contiguous, or...
That's never been attempted, and I don't think the ordinance would allow it for other reasons other than the provisions in the conservation subdivision section of the ordinance. There are other requirements that require continuity, stormwater treatment, and, and other provisions.
I guess my problem is...
That would probably limit or prohibit what you're describing.
All right, thank you very much. That's all we really have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Timekeeper, would you reset the clock? Thank you. Commissioner Winders?
I, uh, it seems to me that the material in the packet is, is adequate to, uh, determine that this, this zoning change makes perfect sense, uh, as that, um, it's consistent with the, more consistent with the comprehensive plan than what the existing zoning is, plus the little river corridored open space plan, uh, recommends, uh, conservation subdivisions for, for this area, and conservation subdivision apparently is not possible under the suburban zoning that was originally there. However, I would just like to ask, so, you know, this is just a matter of curiosity, but for my edification, would you describe the conservation subdivision to us? Some, someone?
Commissioner Winders, Pat Young again with the Planning Department. So, concurrent with the adoption of the Unified Development Ordinance, uh, which was in 2005, took effect in 2006, um, there was provisions added that recognized that there's a lot of area, especially in the northern part of the county, that has, uh, low capacity for development and that has high value ecological, uh, recreational, or open space areas. So, there was an explicit decision made to allow a slight increase in density by right if up to, if a minimum of 50% of a development was preserved as permanent open space. So, that's what's reflected before you on the screen in this proposal, and in the ordinance, section 6.2 is the reference, if you want to look at all the details. But, uh, you know, the short version is that it has to be RR zoning, so that would limit it almost exclusively to the incorporated county, 50, minimum of 50% open space, and it does allow a slight increase in density. It goes from .33 units an acre in the rural tier, or, excuse me, in the, in this, in this instance, which is a water supply watershed overlay, to .5 units, uh, an acre, and the idea being that it's, they're preserving substantial open space.
Okay, wait a minute. Anyone else other than someone who's already spoken? Mr. Page, Commissioner Page?
Am I right in saying that this is going to go back to the original form in which it was before it was zoned earlier? Was it, when you said it earlier on, that it was zoned initially and changed to this, now to go back?
Commissioner Page, this is Scott Whitehead from the Plan Department. I think what Mr. Young was saying is, when the county first established zoning in the 50s, they included this strip of higher intensity zoning along the major roads. Um, what I think we're trying to say is, the comprehensive plan envisions all of the rural tier to be zoned RR, so that's what this would accomplish.
Okay, that, that's, and, um, you know, I, I'm looking at this and thinking, we really don't have, I mean, we have a, an idea, a concept, is what we have. We don't really have anything set before us, other than a request to give somebody an opportunity to come up with something. So, you know, I, I, I mean, this is kind of a no-brainer. This is, I mean, this is free America. Let's, let's go and see what people have, what kind of plan they have, so I'm gonna support it.
Uh, Commissioner Huff?
Um, Ms. Winders, uh, there are some other aspects of the conservation subdivision that are kind of important, um, and I think are what are behind my hesitation to support this rezoning. Um, one is to promote interconnected greenways and corridors throughout the community, and part of this community is gonna be across a four-lane major highway. Um, to promote contiguous green space with adjacent jurisdiction, encourage interaction in community clustering houses, and, but, but it's the matter of co, co, um, contiguous space and the lack of it that bothers me with this. Um, I think that, you know, I think that as it stands right now, the, the property could be developed as single-family homes within the RR, uh, zoning. Uh, I don't think that the RS20 stops that, prohibits that. It could be, it could be developed that way. And what I guess I would have liked to have seen here is what the difference in the, uh, 'cause conservation subdivision allows you to put more houses per acre, you know, what the difference in the number of houses would be with this conservation subdivision, because that's what the zoning is gonna, you know, allow, um, and RR.
Pat Young with Planning Department. I, I can provide that information, and I think you're right. We probably should have included that in the staff report. That, there's approximately, I had 38.5. I thought I heard the applicant say 36. Let's call it 38 acres in the request before you. The base zoning is .33 units an acre, so that would be a maximum of about 12 building lots for single-family residential. For the portion that's before you tonight, under the conservation subdivision provisions, it would be a maximum of about 18 or 19 lots. So, for the portion before you, that's what's in, in place. The remainder of the, um, 200, approximately 235 remaining acres of this development, which can be approved administratively without any rezoning action. Um, we're looking at, the applicant's proposing about 142 building lots, and they could probably do 75, 80 under their traditional zoning.
Um, I mean, maybe I read this thing, you know, wrong, but when, when I was, uh, looking at this, I was thinking, well, you know, this goes back to an RR zoning, which generally means fewer, uh, less, uh, dense development. But as a matter of fact, if this goes through the way it is, there is gonna be a denser development than if we left it. There will be more houses. There will be more lots than if we left it the way it is right now. Correct?
That's, that's not correct, because currently it's zoned RS20, and RS20 would allow the maximum development under the, the tier. Because it's in the water supply watershed, it would still be the approximately 12 lots.
Yeah, I understand that, that the zoning that we are considering tonight, that, that, yeah, technically it's gonna, it, the number of lots will go down in that little strip that's along the highway, but if you consider the whole thing, um...
We're not considering the whole thing. We're just considering the strip that...
Right.
Well, you have to think of the consequences of what the rezoning does.
Well, well, Ms. Huff, Mr. Whitehead reminded me that because this is in the water supply watershed, because it's RS20, under today's rules, with the current zoning, they could, they could get a site plan with one acre lots. So, up to, they'd have to get access. Mr. Miller's correct about that. There, maybe some concerns or issues, but they could get 30, 30 to 35 lots under the current zoning. So, it is a significant reduction from going to RS to the RR, even under the traditional standards rather than the conservation standards. And then there's no, nothing precluding them from doing a small segment of this development as traditional with conservation in the rear. So, I think what the applicant's attempting to do here, and this is what they talked to our staff about, is trying to make sure they incorporate this into what they're proposing to make a better overall development. It's you all's judgment whether that's being accomplished or not.
Commissioner Miller?
I have a question for the applicant, if, if one of you guys could answer it. If this property that is now RS20 were not rezoned, what impact would it have on your ability to develop the property? Uh, in other words, what would happen? I mean, would you, would you still be, move ahead with, uh, with the development of, of the property without a conservation subdivision, or would you change the boundaries of your conservation subdivision and, and, because it, you know, if we don't, if we, if, if the city, excuse me, if the county rezones the property, you can make a bigger conservation subdivision. If it doesn't rezon the property, it's my understanding you can't have a conservation subdivision in an RS20 zone. Is that correct?
You can't have a conservation subdivision within the RS20, so we would go forward with that plan as you see before you. Uh, we would have to, uh, remove a, a small handful of lots and exclude the portion, um, the RS20 portion along...
But the RS20 portion would still be developable as RS20.
Absolutely.
Uh, so, what would, what, just off the top of your head and not holding you to it, uh, what would be the total difference in the number of units?
Uh, maybe 15?
Out of a total potentiality, uh, with the rezoning?
No. I think, I think, I think it's 15.
No, but right now, it, under your current proposals, how many units do you see going in there?
Right now, the application was submitted with 130, 141. and forty-one, and a couple, one is a farmhouse, and one's existing.
So it's the difference between a hundred and forty-one and a hundred and twenty-five or so? A hundred and twenty-six?
If I did the math correctly.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Whitley?
Thank you. This request has-
Please speak into the mic.
This request has been consistent with the comprehensive plan, and all adopted policy and ordinances. When a developer comes to us, and he dots all his i's and crosses all the t's, and there's no neighborhood resistance, I'm going to vote for it. And I would ask thou, we got to be, have some consistency. When it doesn't comply with the comprehensive plan, I can understand the, the resistance, but this one dots all the i's and crosses all the t's, and, and it does what we asked them to do. So I'm going to vote for it, and I recommend that we consider voting for it as well.
Other comments? Other questions? Vice President, I mean, Vice Chair?
I'd like to move approval of zoning case one four zero 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 three six.
I'll second.
It's been motion, and second that we approve is first zoning case one four zero 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 three six. All those in favor, let it be known by raising the right hand. All those opposed?
Motion carries twelve to zero.
Okay, the next case before us, I'd like to open a public hearing for Hendrick South Point, phase two, Z one four, four zeros two.
Good evening, Amy Wolf with the Planning Department. This case, Z one four zero 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 two, is Hendrick South Point, phase two. There we go. The applicant is actually the City of Durham, through EMHT, I believe who's working for Hendrick Auto Group. The, the case is in the city's jurisdiction, pending annexation, hence the city as the applicant. So this will be considered as a consolidated land use item as it moves forward to the city council. The request is from the existing zoning district of rural, or, excuse me, residential rural, which is in the county's jurisdiction presently, to Commercial General with a development plan. The total site on this development plan is forty-five point eight-four acres, and the proposal is for a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of commercial development. The site is a total of sixty-seven parcels, it's in the suburban tier, South, South Point Mall, which, South Point Mall is north of Renaissance Parkway, which is the right-of-way shown where my arrow is. So the site is south of Renaissance Parkway, it's north of Massey Chapel Road, which is along the south, southern portion of this map, or bottom of this map, and it is west of Fayetteville Road. And it's, the site is mostly forested and vacant, and it is within the FJB Watershed Protection Overlay District. The request meets the standards of the Commercial General District, as depicted on this graphic. Existing conditions on the site, and on, on this depiction, north is to the left of the screen, Renaissance Parkway runs this way, it's oriented differently than the previous slide. Again, there's sixty-seven parcels, it's mostly forested and vacant, there are a total of seven segments of right-of-way running through the, the site, and there are, and each of those are in various steps in the street closing process, and there's streams on the site, one through the central portion of the site, which runs east-west, as well as along the southern boundary of the site. The request meets the minimum requirements for a development plan, as shown before you. It depicts the site access point, which is, there's one site access point, where my mouse is pointing. There's two potential stream crossings, one along the western portion of the site, as well as the eastern portion of the site, for the northernmost stream. The tree preservation areas are shown within those buffers, and there's a couple graphic commitments that I'll specify later, but, or, in just a moment, that are located between the two streams along the western boundary, which are for berm wall and evergreen plantings. So the minimum commitments are as follows, a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of non-residential area, the one site access point that I pointed out, which is along the existing Kennington Drive. The impervious surface maximum will be seventy percent, and the tree coverage at twenty-two point four-one percent. There's graphic commitments, which are the location of the site access points, tree preservation areas, the potential stream crossings, the berm and the evergreen planting area, as well as a masonry wall on top of that area, again, that's the portion along the western boundary between the two streams, as well as the closing of existing right-of-way within the site, which, again, those are all in various, all currently in process at various points along the way. There's a number of text commitments, which is the construction of the berm, it's a minimum of six feet in height, it's depicted at thirty feet wide, in addition to the project boundary buffer that's required, as well as the eight-foot masonry wall fence on top of that berm. In addition, there are commitment to plant evergreen trees associated with that berm and the wall. There's no external loudspeakers, and, and these, this is a summary of the commitments, the full commitments are in your staff report, and on the development plan. No lighting spillover along the property line, which is the same location of the berm wall and evergreen plantings, and limitation of construction hours, which is no holidays, no construction on Sundays, and the hours are limited on Saturdays between eight-thirty AM and five-thirty PM. There's a number of traffic-related commitments, some improvements at Fayetteville Road, as well as Fayetteville Road and James Ross Road, and I believe these are all carryovers from the adjacent site, which is also Hendrick South Point Phase One, they are related. Fayetteville Road at Kennington Drive, a number of commitments there, as well as Renaissance Parkway and Rolando, Fayetteville Road and Renaissance Parkway, and, as well as commitments that are maybe required of this site at Fayetteville Road and Massey Chapel Road, both the northern and southern intersections. There are design commitments associated with, with this site, this is a summary, the limitation of one and a half to two stories in height, main entrances on the front of the, of the buildings, with additional entrances, and specification of overhead doors, there's roofline and material commitments for both the main buildings and accessory buildings. There are distinctions between main and accessory buildings, as well as how the buildings will fit into the context area, they will front on the main road. The request for Commercial General is consistent with the future land use map of the comprehensive plan, which depicts the site as read on this map, which is Commercial. And this request was reviewed against the applicable policies of our comprehensive plan, as summarized here, and staff determines that this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other policies and ordinances. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Amy. I have one person signed up to speak in the affirmative, Louis Cheek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Louis Cheek, I'm at eleven Captain's Point in Greensboro. I represent Hendrick Automotive in this matter. This is phase two, phase one of this development came before you about a year ago. It's the automotive park that has been put under construction out near South Point. This is about forty-five acres, it's the old Kennington Heights neighborhood, this is the last of that neighborhood. All properties have been closed upon, as we were asked by the city council to do. This, this phase, is phase two, it will be an extension of the automotive park. The western boundary is Avon Drive, and you've heard a little bit about some of the things that Hendrick has agreed to do in order to restrict the impact on the neighborhood there. We've been in communication with those neighbors, and as a result, have entered into agreements for text commitments. Staff has determined that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable policies and ordinances, and we hope that you will support this and send a recommendation of approval to the city council.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this matter? If no, then we will close the public hearing and bring it back before the commissioners. Do we have commissioners wishing to speak? Okay, I got it. Okay.
I just want to state that I was here when we approved phase one, for those commissioners that were not here, we had a great showing of citizens, owners of properties that lived in the Kennington neighborhood who came on that night, and they all stood and approved of this phase one, and to my knowledge, they did know that phase two was coming at that time, and so, as a citizen advisory board, we had the citizens buy in on phase one, and naturally we have citizens buy in on phase two, and so that, for that reason alone, I think this is a project that needs to be approved. Thank you.
Commissioner Miller?
I wanted to follow up on what Commissioner Member Davis said. I met earlier this week with the, some of the leaders of the neighborhood group, and they were full of praises to you folks for the, working with them, and I wanted to make sure the other commission members were aware that they do support this, and I thought to give you guys credit for the extraordinary lengths you went to, to make your proposed development be a good neighbor to the residences nearby, and I thought that was worthy of note during this hearing. Thank you.
Commissioner Bucksbay?
Great, yes, I just echo that as well, having heard from the neighbors directly, and appreciate the various commitments that you've made, so we appreciate that, thank you.
Commissioner Whitley?
I would like to present a motion.
I too appreciate what you did, working with the community, and I too have heard from lots of them with reference to the lengths you went to, to please them, thank you. Now, Commissioner Whitley?
All right. I move that we approve Z one four zero 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 two.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Okay, it's been moved as second that we approve zoning case one four four zero two. All those in favor, let it be known by showing the right hand. All those in opposition?
The motion carries twelve to zero.
Thank you. Okay, we have item six, public hearing, text amendment to the UDO.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, that was a typo, there are no text amendments to the UDO on the agenda tonight.
The Planning Department don't make typos.
Sorry, our, our real clerk left, so-
New business announcements?
Mr. Chair, we have seven cases, seven land use cases scheduled for next month's meeting, some of which may be lively, so I would plan for a long and interesting evening.
Please.
Can I, I just want to challenge all commissioners, when we get our work, let's do our homework before we come in, it may be a little bit more work, but it would help the process, it'd be fair to fellow commissioners, and to citizens who may be waiting on their case to be heard, and so, when we go back and forth on questions and comments that we probably could get answered before we come to that meeting, I think we do fellow commissioners and the citizens a disservice, so I challenge you, knowing that we have seven land use cases next month, to really be due diligent, and do your research before, and not have questions that could have been answered prior to this meeting. Thank you.
Are there other announcements? Are there other comments? If not, you want to say something else? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Been motioned to adjourn, all those in favor, by getting up and leaving.